Okay. I've got seven o'clock. I'll call the Monday, January 27th regular Board of Education meeting to order. Nikki, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Nikki Austin, President. Jim Curran.
President.
Rich Deffrey.
President.
Eric Ecthal.
President.
Mike Proset.
President.
Teresa Keen.
Present.
Dylan McGuire.
President.
Terry Montgomery.
Present.
Phil Vassberg.
Present.
All right. We have a forum. We're in session. I will ask for a motion. I'll entertain a motion to approve. One second. Entertain a motion to amend the agenda to include the wording consent item E. Approval of professional staff resignation contingent upon all parties fulfilling their contractual requirements.
So moved.
Motion by Terry.
Second.
Second by Nikki. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next, I would entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda for the Board of Education meeting this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eric, second by Jim. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right. First item on the agenda is then our consent agenda. Do any board members wish to remove a consent agenda item for individual consideration? Hearing none, we'll read them into the record. Approving the minutes for the Board of Education meeting from January 13th, 2025. Approval and acceptance of community donations, 12 rolls of .035 gauge welding wire to the Monroe High School by Monroe Truck Equipment. Donations to the Backpack Buddies, $201 St. Clair Viscous Parish, $125 United Church of Christ, $100 Jennifer Cran and Mule. $50 Dennis and Diana Ostike in memory of Sue Scott. $50 Donald and Bonnie Barker, and $30 Howard and Mary Ann Johnson. Approval of professional staff hiring, Randy Harris, special education teacher Abraham Lincoln Elementary. Approval of support staff hiring, Melissa Dixon, accounting secretary Northside Elementary. This is an approval to rescind the resignation that the Board of Education approved at the Board of Education meeting on the 13th of January. And approval of professional staff resignation contingent upon all parties fulfilling their contractual requirements. Katie Johnson, sixth grade special education teacher for the Monroe Middle School. And again, thanks to our very generous community for continuing to donate to Backpack Buddies. I also heard that SSM Health in Monroe has a food drive going right now to benefit them as well. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Teresa and a second by Terry. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item is public comment. I have no one signed up for public comment. No old business, so we're going to move on to new business. First item is naming an interim superintendent for the district. And at our previous board meeting, we discussed accepting Mr. Figaro's resignation. And at that time, we had conveyed an open session that I would be exercising the authority granted to the board president to name an acting superintendent. And that then at this meeting, we would have on the agenda consideration for the board to appoint Joe Monroe as an interim superintendent. So this can be kind of a complicated topic, so I'm actually going to provide a little bit of context for folks in an overview. And then we'll hear from Joe and then board members, we can have a discussion before we vote. So as the board is considering action this evening, and we first again provide that context for reasonable steps we should take as part of a long-term plan to identify and name our next permanent superintendent. Because this can seem confusing to the observer, we're going to go over the sort of three distinct states of roles for a leader of our school district. Acting is assigned through board president delegation, and that is the capacity in which Mr. Monroe has been ensuring normal operations of the school district under. Interim is through the action of the majority of the board, which is the capacity that we will be discussing granting to Joe this evening. And the final role is absent really any additional descriptors, simply our district administrator or our permanent district administrator. And again, that is through board action, majority of the board. And at least has been an established known for our board, has arrived through and with consideration from a competitive interview process with input and feedback from stakeholders, including students, staff, parents, administrators, community leaders, business partners, and essentially our entire community at large. And through those sessions, they build a profile that is then used during that process. That interview process is coordinated by an independent third party, otherwise known as a search firm. So that's a little high level on the process. Tonight, the action the board will be considering would be to appoint Mr. Monroe as interim superintendent through the 25-26 school year. And there is intention behind the duration of appointment, and I'm going to go over that a little bit now so that folks are aware. A normal contract duration for a school administrator is from July 1st to June 30th. And that's pretty intuitive. The school year ends in May, going into June. And while regular classes are not in session, our teams are hard at work preparing for the next school year, starting, beginning on July 1st to prepare for the September start. So there are cycles for hiring process for a superintendent to back into that normal timeline for posting and seeking a quality candidate pool for a new superintendent. So the best time to begin the search process is at the beginning of that cycle in the fall of the previous school year you intend to hire in. So we would be ultimately under the best conditions. That's a nine-month process. The beginning of that cycle will bring the largest number of high-quality candidates if we start in the fall of '25. So may not feel like it, but with spring just eight weeks away, we are through the first two cycles of normal recruitment for a superintendent. We're heading into the last cycle. So to start now would not only be a compressed timeframe to seek all of that feedback that I talked about from the stakeholders, it would likely result in a smaller pool of applicants. So that's just one piece of the puzzle, though, right? What can also impact the quality of a candidate pool is the real or perceived public sentiment that a school district receives in the form of support or not from their community. And we have to remember when we're searching for a superintendent, we're not just interviewing them, they're also interviewing us. Unfortunately, right now, we're in an unenviable position of having recently failed a referendum, requiring some budget reductions. We've acknowledged some public sentiment challenges further complicated by state funding priorities. And we're in the middle of a very large construction project. Now, that is not to say that we don't have incredible things going on, a number of amazing things going on, thanks to the hard work of our amazing staff, our students, building partners. But it does mean that I feel as a board and a district and a community, we have some work ahead to make sure we're telling our story about these great things going on in our district and community and making that the focus. So I say all that about the context about why we're planning or why starting. The search in the fall of '25 would place us in a far better position for a July 1-26 hire. And why we'd be considering naming Joe the interim superintendent effective immediately all the way through the '25-26 school year. So what does that mean from an organizational view for the district? If the board takes action tonight to appoint Joe the interim superintendent, he's agreed to take on the duties in addition to his current role for the remainder of this year. We have the authority to do this through reassignment of his duties under his current contract to no additional cost to the district. And we do acknowledge, though, that the role of interim superintendent is not best served for the entire 18 months when shared with Joe's current duties. So if we take action this evening, it's with the expectation and understanding that administration will return to the board with a succession plan for the '25-26 school year to include a recommendation to determine an interim director of people services while Joe serves in that role for us, or while Joe serves in the superintendent role for us during the school year beginning July 1st of '25. So additionally, beginning that search in the fall of '25 ensures that any search or hiring process wouldn't overlap two seated boards. And that occurs, seating of the new board occurs at the second meeting in April every year. So the board seated this April would have a view into and can participate in the entire process from start to offering and acceptance of the position. And in my view, that is in the best interests of our district and our community. So Joe, is there anything you want to add before board discussion?
Yeah, I'd just say thanks to Rich and the board for considering me for the interim superintendent position. I'm grateful for the trust in this consideration and process. And I'm excited about the opportunity to serve our students, our families, our staff, and our community. This district is very important to me. Been here for a while. Been here 27 years. I've dedicated my entire career to this district and this community. And to me, it's really important that if given the opportunity, I do this in a way that makes everyone proud. I recognize that there's a lot of work to be done. And that work needs to be done both within our schools and across the community. And we know that we're going to face some tough decisions moving forward, starting with tonight. We've got a tough budget conversation ahead of us. But please know that I'm committed to working with all the stakeholders in the community, and I mean that in a clear and transparent manner to develop an understanding in the community and hopefully rebuild some trust across the community. So despite those challenges, I've never been more optimistic about everything that's going on in our schools. We have a lot to celebrate. It's exciting when you think about it. And not the least of which is our staff, which is performing at incredible levels. They're really doing things that have never been done in this school district during all of my time here, well, over a quarter of a century. And so it's important to recognize that our staff is very hardworking. They're competent, they're creative, and they're caring people that make sacrifices for their students every day. So I'm proud to be a part of this team. I'd be privileged and honored to have the opportunity to lead the team on an interim basis. And I thank you guys for your consideration.
Thanks, Joe. Comments, questions, discussion from board members? I appreciate the time you've put in to putting that together, Rich, because I think there probably would have been a lot of comment and discussion without, you know, the time you put into that narrative. So thank you for that.
I agree. I think some of my comments are, you summed up probably better than I did. But I think it's important that we know we're going to get new board members, and we don't want to be rushed in a timeline. So I think that's an important consideration to make sure that any new board members have an opportunity to participate as well as making sure we give ample time for community input and stakeholder input from staff and students and businesses and community members. And so I think to make sure we have that adequate time is important.
So is one kind of comment, question, discussion point? You know, 18 months seems like a really long time for an interim anything in any organization. So I just kind of want to open that up and see, you know, thoughts on that. Joe, you know, sometimes that's really hard to roll back from if we open up the process and start looking for the permanent superintendent.
Yeah, it's a good question. People have asked me that. And actually, I see it the other way, I think, from a personal side. This is an opportunity for me to come in, sit in the chair in the middle of the table. I've been sitting at this table for a long time, and this is a hard job. There's a lot of tough days ahead. But what I truly want is for this district and this community to have the best superintendent that it can have. And we need to find someone who's a good fit. I happen to think I'm going to work really hard and do a good job. And if we get into the process next year and I am selected, that would be great. If it's not me, I trust that the board has selected someone that they feel will do a great job going forward. So the benefit for me is I happen to have loved being the director of people services. I think it's the best job in the school district. So I feel good about my position. I have enough faith and trust in the board and the community that we're going to do the right thing. And it's my job to make sure that I set the district up. So as Rich said, so it is an appealing place for other candidates. And then if I decide to apply for the job at that time, they'll have to beat me out, and that's what we'll do. So I'm very comfortable. I appreciate you asking the question, but I'm quick to tell everyone that I'm the acting superintendent until I'm told the interim. I'm the interim, and I'm the interim until anything else changes.
Any other questions, comments?
I don't have a question, but you know, I generally heard positive feedback with the decision we're making. I support you, Joe, in the interim position. As a board, we're behind whoever's in that role. That would be you as an interim if we vote accordingly. So I'd like you to share that.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I would agree. I've had a lot of good feedback. And I'm just excited for our district because you know the district already. And I think it would be a real challenge for someone else to try to step in right now. If we were to try to search for an interim outside of the district, I think that would be really hard with some of the challenges that we have that we're coming up on, to try to have someone. So I appreciate that you're willing to serve in this role and to save some money for the district by playing both roles for a bit. That will not be without its own challenges as well. So thank you. I appreciate that you're willing.
Thanks.
I would then entertain a motion if somebody would like to make it to.
Who's got it, Jim?
It's a Jim.
And Phil. And that's Phil.
I've got a motion by Jim and a second by Phil. To approve Joe Monroe as the interim superintendent through the '25 through '26 school year as presented. Nikki, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Nikki Austin, yes. Jim Curran.
Yes.
Rich Deffrey.
Yes.
Eric Ecthal.
Yes.
Mike Proset.
Yes.
Terry Montgomery. Oops, I missed the backup. Teresa Keen. Dylan McGuire.
Yes.
Terry Montgomery.
Yes.
And Phil Vassberg.
All right. Motion carries. Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is item B. It's our district auditor report. And I'm going to turn it over to Ron. And we have somebody from.
Lotterbach and Almond.
Lotterbach and Almond. Sorry. I had it and fell right out of my head before I said it.
I was going to say LNA.
All right.
We've got Christina here from Lotterbach and Almond. Which I believe you want to go with that. We've been our auditors now for the last couple of years, and she'll be going over this year's audit report. And pleased to say again, for the most part, it's a great clean audit. So that's always what we're hoping to see in here. So appreciate having worked with them. I know when we had switched, as the requirements across the state become more and more onerous on auditors and districts, a lot of the small firms are getting out of that business. There's only a handful of large firms now that are doing it. And so for us, it was a change from a long-term relationship, and we weren't sure going into it, you know, what that would mean for us. But it's worked out well. It's been a great relationship. And so that'll turn over to Christina.
Thanks. That's always good to hear. Thank you for your time. I will be brief. I know you have a long night ahead of you with some budget discussions. And of course, it's no secret that there are financial challenges ahead of you. But as an auditor, I get to live in the past, and I can tell you that the past financial information is accurate, and that's really what an audit is for. So for your fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024, the audit process went off without a hitch, and that entails two parts to it. We come out and do, well, I should, I say come out loosely, but you know, now we do things half remotely and half in person. But there's two phases to the audit process, the preliminary phase and then the final fieldwork phase. The preliminary fieldwork phase is when we get an idea of your internal control structure, how your school district works, who the department heads are, whether or not you've had turnover. And that is how we build out the audit process for the final fieldwork phase. And that will be what includes all of the testing. We do what's called analytical testing as well as substantive testing. Analytical testing is when we go in and take a look and compare to your budget, to historical data. And then we decide whether or not we need to do a deep dive into certain accounts that are less risky. With higher risk accounts like your expenditures, you know, things like credit cards, we do a deeper dive, and we do what's called substantive testing, where we actually pull invoices and transactions to ensure that they are accurately recorded and recorded in the right spot. So the whole entire culmination of that is the financial statements that you have before you. And that annual financial report is the management and board's responsibility. And our claim to fame as your auditors is on page one of the audit report, or page one of your financial statements where the audit report resides. And there are actually two reports. One is for the financial audit, and the second is special verbiage related to the state and federal audit requirements, which will be summarized in a separate report as we conclude the single audit for this school district. The main audit opinion is what we call in, you know, regular terms, a clean opinion. It's unmodified and jargon. So that's what you want. It means that we found your line items in your financial statements to be fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And that's what the audit process gets us to, decide. So that is basically your opinion, and it's the culmination of the audit process. You also have what we call a management letter that's just usually a heads up on new standards and things like that. And you guys don't really have any comments there. So there's really not too much to write home about when it comes to what we are recommending for you except for implementing new standards. And that doesn't mean everything is perfect. It just means that we think your internal controls, the way they are, with all of the people in place, and what we observed during the process is appropriate for a school district of your size. So of course, it's not a perfect world, but you know, we didn't see any risk issues that we needed to mention to you that elevated to the management letter. So that basically concludes my presentation. Like I said, the audit process was very smooth this year. As always, we thank Ron and his department for being so responsive throughout the whole process. And we really enjoy working with you all and thank you for taking that initial jump in risk. We've grown a lot as a result, and we have 31 schools now that we audit. So and, you know, we've also grown in the municipality and other realms as well. But this is really what kicked it off and why the schools are growing so quickly. So we appreciate your partnership and collaboration and hope to continue doing that for many years to come. Any questions?
I'm pretty much down in Wisconsin because you guys historically have been in Illinois for years.
That's right. Yeah. Thank you for pointing that out. Not sure if everyone knows that. So I'm happy to entertain any questions, if you have them, about the audit report or the management letter.
Questions, comments on board? Anything additional to that, Ron?
No, I would like to say, actually, I think it's, I guess, probably the one thing I should say is, you know, all the credit goes to my staff for this. You know, the auditors talk to me some during the audit process, but you guys are working with Julie, Lisa, Heather, and, you know, the grant team as well. So we have, you know, all those folks involved. And it's just a crazy amount of work that they do to pull everything and get it prepared for yourselves. And so, you know, it's, I'm always glad as well when we see a clean audit. You know, I always expect it, but you know, you always hope it. And we live in a world where you always have to, it's great that we have an annual validation of that. And the work that's, my team does to prepare for it is great. And the audit team is really good about providing some of those expectations upfront so that they can pull it off in as timely and efficient of a manner as possible. So.
As a board member, I'll echo that. Ron, thank you to your staff. Ellen P. Did you say Ellen P.?
LNA.
LNA. It takes a bunch of time, and it's a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm wishing you a short meeting.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is our academic update. What do you have for us tonight?
January is a busy month for us. Sort of a couple of things I wanted to share with the board. We're at the midpoint, or almost the midpoint of the school year. So a good opportunity for us, our admin, our teachers, to reflect and kind of revisit some of our district goals and priorities and also celebrate some of the great things we're doing across the district. So one thing that Joe and I have done the last couple of years, we've always kicked the year off by visiting all the buildings and rolling out our instructional goals and goals for the district and having a little fun with staff. We did that again right after break. We popped around to each building, met with them, celebrated some things that's happening in the district. I have a list here. I don't want to say those out loud. I obviously have a new high school going up, which is pretty cool. $2 million CTE grant. We're building a new house with the launch program. We've got three elementary schools that are five-star. We've got one that's a blue ribbon. A lot of great things. We got a middle school and high school that all moved up a level on the report cards. We're introducing some 612 evidence-based grading work and continue to do great work and see those gains across the district. So I know when there's other stuff that isn't as fun happening across the district right now, I know Joe and I really want to emphasize the importance of celebrating those things with staff and making sure that's in front of them as much as possible because we really do have some great leaders and great teachers in this district and a lot of great things happening. So that was one of our focuses when we met with staff after break. We also shared some student perception data that we collected in December. So we shared a little bit with staff and then connected that work to our instructional priorities that we are focusing on within engagement, relational teaching, and assessments. And then shared some resources with staff to provide them with some support as we continue to work on that. And then we also, we've done some AI. So hot topic in education right now is AI. We started the year with introducing staff with a little bit of AI and honestly giving them permission to start using it more because there's lots of efficiencies and things that AI can provide our staff. So we weaved in a little bit of our AI PD and had a little fun with principals and roasting them. Sorry, guys. Through ChatGPT. But honestly, just keeping it in front of staff. You know, we're just getting started with some of that work in the district. We had some staff attend late in December, received some information on other districts that are a little bit farther ahead in that work. So we're starting to give staff some information and provide some PD and support to encourage them to continue to use it because it's all over. It's in a lot of different resources and apps we're currently using. Kids obviously have access to this, so that's going to be a focus of ours moving forward is how do we create some guidelines, parameters within how students use it? And again, focus on how staff can use it too, create some efficiencies and assist in doing the work. So pretty excited about that. I know we've got some staff that are also nervous about it, right? Because it's different, and we're working through that. But I know Josh Wilson's not here tonight, but he was an anti-AI guy, and he's come around, and now he's championing the work. So I think staff are starting to see some of the benefits and the importance of it. Our kids need to have skills in how to use it because businesses, they want employees that have access and know how to use that. So it's going to be a big part of our work moving forward. We're putting together a district committee that will meet in early February to start rolling out how we continue to use it with staff and create some guidelines and policies that will probably begin next fall. Because teachers are asking for that specifically in English classes. And how do we, how do we use it or give kids access, but create some guardrails? So that's one thing. Joe, did I miss anything with our mid-year update?
That's great.
The other thing that we do in the January window is we collect a lot of data, a lot of mid-year data. So we screen kids mid-year. New this year is Act 20, which has been a wild ride. And all 5K through third grade students have been screened using Ames Web Assessment System, which is new. It's not a system we've used, we have used it previously, but it's not our benchmarking screening system. We use FastBridge. So we needed to retrain staff. Lots of hours, unfortunately, lots of hours, went into putting together a plan to screen kids at the middle of the year within that assessment system. And I should acknowledge Tony Wellman and Glenn McEwen, who took that project on as reading teachers and leaders in the district to help us navigate that and implement it across our three elementary buildings. So I think we're almost complete with that testing. And there's a lot of things that go with that. One part of it is. One part of it is just screening the students, and then it's looking at the data and creating reading plans for students and communicating to parents. We have systems in place that we're already doing a lot of that work, which was great, but it's still new and different, and took a lot of time for our staff to, to get that rolled out. So thank you to also the school sites and principals and teachers that are involved in that, because it's, it's been a lot of work. And we're figuring some things out as we go as our other districts, as they implement it as well. Yeah, those are the two big things, kind of the mid-year district goal update and then our screening window here in the winter when we collect all the data. We usually have intervention plans updated, and teams are meeting throughout the end of this month and into early February to update programs for kids. That's a lot of the work that happens here in January.
Just a question. The Act Twenty, if I remember right from previous discussions, we were already doing a lot of that screening, just not using the tool that's now required by state law, right?
Yep.
So all the effort has gone into basically doing what we do with the new tool.
Yeah, yep, learning a new system, training staff that are, you know, giving the assessments, because a lot of the assessments are one-to-one, or they're meeting with kids, giving that. So yeah, it's just getting staff comfortable with the new platform. And there's some, you know, problems as you go with the platform and just challenges that you have to kind of work through. But again, Glenda and Tony took the lead on it and did a phenomenal job in, in doing the best they can to roll it out successfully to all three buildings, and we're in a good spot. We've got everybody done, but it's been a lot of work.
Is there anything that we as a board can do to support you when things like this happen, like the state starts to push requirements that we're kind of already doing but different? You know?
Maybe some [inaudible].
Yeah, I think they've received plenty of feedback, whether it's from me or other districts in terms of some things that we think need to be adjusted and changed, and this kind of stuff has happened before. Terry's, when we were doing PALS, thank you, PALS Assessment, which was around for about a year or two. So they'll get feedback, and hopefully there'll be some adjustments made moving into next year, because there's certainly some things that we'd like to see done differently.
Yeah, I guess I would, you know, flip to my side of the equation, I think, you know, as Todd said, hopefully DPI can take some feedback and make some adjustments as to how they administer it. You know, there were dollars originally allocated in the state budget to help implement Act Twenty. I can't remember if they were allocating federal dollars or if it was actually a, an allocation that was within the budget itself, but legislators have not chosen to release those funds, and so those funds are being held at the state level. And, you know, obviously, there's costs and time involved with implementing this, so, you know, we, we talk about unfunded mandates. Here's one where they actually had a plan to fund part of it, and we're still not getting the dollars released out to schools, so that's frustrating.
Thanks, Todd. Anything to add, Joe?
No, just that principals and staff have done a lot of work. Todd, you know, was quick to shower the staff with praise and certainly the principals, but Todd's been unbelievable in his work to coordinate all of this, so we're appreciative of his efforts.
All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda then. It's item D. It's the School District of Monroe Open Enrollment Recommendations for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Annually, by state statute, we have to make this determination and approve it through board action by the end of January, I believe.
Yep, that's correct.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, so as Rich said, this is something that we do every year, has to be approved in January. Essentially, the recommendation that we're making is that there are no, no limitations to the open enrollments that we accept for regular education, open enrollment spaces. As far as special education, we provided the board some information on the program limits that we've proposed. This is necessary because we receive a significant, significant number of requests every year for students to come in and access our special ed programming, and we would love to be able to provide support to all kids that make that request, all their families. The reality is that we don't have the capacity to do that and to serve the kids in Monroe. Just the way Monroe is, is set up geographically, we are the largest district in a rather rural area, and unfortunately, some of those small districts don't have the resources necessary to meet the needs of their kids, and as a result, we receive some open enrollment requests, and we have to place those limits to make sure that we can protect our programming. The limits that you see here are largely the same as years past. The difference is we've made some reductions to staffing and programming, so that, those have been eliminated. And we do have some programs where we have some very intensive needs, and we've had to bring the numbers down a little bit just to make sure that we don't add to the responsibilities in those programs, because there's some pretty intensive needs in the buildings right now, right, principals? And, and we're, we're doing our very best with the resources that we have, and it's great work, but we have to be protective of that work, otherwise we could be overwhelmed pretty quickly. So I'd be happy to answer any questions relative to this request.
Questions, comments?
There's another question. So it says we're not going to limit regular education. I know we're going to eliminate some full-time positions in the next, could eliminate some positions in the next discussion.
Correct.
Is there anything that would affect, that's on the chopping block, that would affect unlimited?
No, typically, no, typically, when we see, you know, that would be a good problem to have, right? If we had a huge influx of, of an open, of open enrollment requests relative to our regular ed students. Typically, when we get those requests, they don't come in chunks or bubbles, they come spread out across the board, and so we're usually able to accommodate those requests as they happen. It's possible that that could happen, and we would have to make adjustments, but historically, that hasn't been the case.
There's no questions, conversation?
Joe, I'm curious, the, the numbers, it looks like they're by section, so for example, Parkside's got thirty-five in Program One and eighteen in Program Two. Is that like a half-time position devoted to?
Yep, yep. So some of those programs, it's reflecting a staffing contract, and, and so we make that determinate, determination based on the amount of time that's available for that particular staff member. And I, I will say that we are, through some necessary reductions, we're, we're in a good place, but we're pretty tight right now, and we've realized this year so that some, some work that we've been able to do and additional coverage that we've been able to provide previously is, our ability to do that's been reduced at times due to the fact that we've made some reductions. So we're making it work, we're meeting the intent of the law and meeting our obligations and the IPs, but there's a lot going on right now. We have a lot of kids that have a lot of needs, and every day, we're working hard to make sure we meet those needs.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. Any additional questions or conversation? Thought I'd entertain a motion if somebody would like to make it.
Some moved.
Second?
Yes.
Motion by Terry and a second by Phil. Motion is to not limit regular education enrollment spaces in any grade level for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year and to limit special education enrollment spaces for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year according to the recommended case manager limits as proposed by Joe Monroe, interim superintendent and director of People's Services. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. The next item on the agenda is discussion around operations budget reductions. This item's in front of the board for action this evening. It's continuation of our ongoing discussions to identify budget reductions caused by a combination of underfunding from state legislatures and the impact of the failed November referendum. We've asked administration to provide the board in open session with necessary details and context that we were able to share with the public to arrive at guidance in terms of an amount to reduce the overall budget by for the twenty-twenty-five school year that will enable administration to begin work to meet that target. So again, our task this evening is to approve a specific reduction amount. I'm going to turn it over to Joe and team to walk us through the presentation they've prepared, including a proposed timeline for action by the board to enable them to finalize that work and communicate a plan for the reductions.
Great. Thanks, Rich. As Rich said, the board felt and the admin team felt that it was important for us to provide some information prior to the conversation that's about to happen. Certainly, a lot of what we're going to talk about is familiar to the board. Ron's done a great job providing an overview of how the state of Wisconsin funds public schools, but considering that there are some people here and some people at home that might be watching, we wanted to lay out all the factors so people have a clear understanding of how we got here and why we're making some of the decisions that, that are about to be made, and both at the board level and the administrative team level. So let's start with Wisconsin Public School funding. Ron's already talked about some of this. He discussed it in, in Finance Committee earlier. When it comes to Wisconsin Public School funding, it really comes down to the fact that there are three funding sources, whether it be federal aid, state aid, and local property taxes. In nineteen ninety-three, the state of Wisconsin imposed revenue limits, and basically, they, they served the purpose of limiting the combined amount of operating property tax and general aid. So that was meant to provide tax relief, right? And I think all of us would say, that's a good thing. No one, I can't think of many people that, when they get their tax bills, say this is, this is fun and exciting. So good intentions. There's also equalization aid. Ron talked about that at our Finance Committee meeting earlier today, and basically, the purpose of that is to reduce disparities for districts that don't have the, the property wealth that some others do. The challenge with that is that an increase does not always mean more revenues, and Ron is quick to say this, and he said it earlier today, he probably says it a lot these days. An increase in aid without the corresponding increase in revenue limit is simply tax relief for the community. So that's a good thing. We're not here to say that it's not a good thing, but from a district perspective, when we, we don't see an increase in revenue and we're dealing with inflationary factors, that's a challenge. So you put all that together, and basically what that means is we have some real challenges in the state of Wisconsin. We do have some inequities due to property wealth challenges. The revenue limit constraints do not keep pace with inflation, and we're going to talk about that in a little bit, and that, that leads us to budget reductions. We just got done talking about special education. It's where my heart lies. It's important work, but the reality is there's state and federal laws that have been put in place, and the funding that needs to happen to make those a reality have not been provided, and as a result, that burden falls on the local taxpayer. Declining enrollment is also a factor in that when you're in a, a district with a declining enrollment, there's typically a reduction in revenue limit, and may also be a reduction in aid. And all of that, in the aggregate, basically says this. The way the system is set up is that the state of Wisconsin is asking the school districts to rely on local taxpayers and operational referendums in order to pay the bills. And that's a challenging reality, but it's one that we have to live with and one that we're going to work through tonight in part. The next slide is basically a slide that Ron has shared multiple times, and what it represents is the gap that's been created by revenue limits in relation to inflationary factors since two thousand nine. And in summary, basically what it says is, if you look at inflation, and if you base that on CPI and you look at what revenue limits has done, we're basically have a gap of about thirty-three hundred dollars per student. And if you consider that we have about twenty-two hundred students in our district, and you do the simple math with that, it's a significant amount of money. You're looking at about seven point four million dollars. So that's a challenge that's hard to overcome. That's not the fault of, of any administrator, that's not the fault of any board member, that is the reality of revenue limits and how the state of Wisconsin funds public schools. So given that, we say, how did we get here? All right, we just talked about Wisconsin Public School funding. It's tough. We rely on operational referendums in order to make up that gap that we just discussed. We just had a failed referendum in November of twenty-twenty-four. The community voted against supporting that referendum at a forty-five percent yes to fifty-five percent no. And basically, what that means is that vote constituted an end to eight years of non-recurring referendum support, which was providing one point five million dollars annually to the district. And so that puts us in a position that we have to figure out how we are going to maintain an appropriate budget in order to ensure the financial viability of our district going forward. Given these challenges, the board rightly sought out feedback from the community through a community survey and some listening sessions that I think were great. Through that process, it was very clear that the message was that the community does not feel that it's appropriate to go to a referendum in April of twenty-twenty-five, and encouraged us to wait at least a year. And to the board's credit, they've honored that, that feedback and said, we, we are not going forward. And that puts us in, in this position. We have a budget that we need to figure out, and there are reductions that are necessary. And in order to do that, we've got to make some tough decisions tonight. And that starts with the board making a determination about the necessary amount to reduce from our operational budget for next year. We, before we get into that specific piece of the, the process, we did feel it was important to provide a history of some of the reductions that have happened in the district. One of the things that we've heard or some of the feedback that we've received is people saying, you need to run the district like a business, you need to trim the fat, and it's important for me to say, on behalf of, of the administrative team and the board, that there are tough decisions that are made on a daily basis in this district. We are constantly looking at every, every staffing decision with a critical eye to make sure that these are positions that we continue to need. And so, Sean, if you would, this slide basically represents all of the reductions and the additions in staffing that have been made over the last three years. So along the top, you'll see that those are the positions that were reduced. Again, we have the positions that have been added back because we feel it's important to be honest, clear, transparent, so you can get a sense of what that, what that all looks like. In the next slide, when we get to it, we'll, we'll talk about the, then that impact of the reductions and the additions. But I'll ask Todd, you know, to talk a little bit about some of the reductions that have been made over time as well as some of the additions.
Yeah, I think you can, you can see, and like Joe referenced, over time, with enrollment changes or just reductions that we needed to make, there's been reductions in all areas, whether it's ELA, math. Certainly, AVE had several reductions that's on the list over the last two to three years. You can kind of see as you move across. Certainly, every year, we've made some significant reductions with twenty-four, twenty-five being, being a pretty big list that we've made. You look at the added down below, you can see the twenty-three, twenty-four list being a little bit bigger there. That's where we made some significant changes with our systems and updates in resources at the middle school, high school, added a math teacher at Northside. We added an ELL program over at Northside. We really felt like with kids, in terms of programming, we needed those resources. Thinking twenty-three, it would have been spring of twenty-three, Joe and I brought a reallocation plan to you guys and said, here's the reductions that we're making, here's the adds that we need to make to continue to provide great programming for kids. And we also had, you know, uptick in our ELL programming in terms of kids moving into the district. So those resources were necessary at that time to add so we can continue to provide, provide good resources.
And I would add that some of the, that staff reallocation plan, I think, played a huge role in some of the success that we're realizing now, so appreciate that. Before we move on, any questions from the board about what's represented here? We just felt it was really important, not only for the board but for the community, to get a sense of this work, because again, we're making these decisions continually, and I, I understand why people would, would. And I understand why people would think that some of this work isn't happening because we don't always celebrate it as much as maybe we need to, and that's because it doesn't always feel like a celebration. It's tough when we're losing resources and we have a lot of needs in the buildings. But the reality is, there's been a significant number of reductions that have happened just over the last three years.
I'm wondering if you could maybe speak a little bit to the, for folks who weren't clear with the interventionist role, kind of the strategy or thought behind, because what we could have done in '23, '24 is just refilled the positions that were vacated, or we could have just let those kind of go away via attrition, but we made the strategic decision to add interventionist roles. Can you speak to the thought behind that?
Yeah, I think, you know, we have obviously a high number of students that need additional services beyond just our core programming. And we felt like specifically coming off of some interesting years of education after COVID, that we had a higher number of students that really needed what we consider Tier Two and Tier Three support, where they needed some really intensive programming. And we just frankly didn't have the resources that we needed across the district. In the elementary, we needed more support for math at Northside. At the high school, we didn't have these resources in place, so there really wasn't a system. And I think I've shared some of this data before, Jim, is we're serving, you know, close to 100 kids, where we were serving maybe 20. So we're just serving way more students that need additional support in both ELA and math. I mean, we felt, you know, at the same time, we were making some of these changes and reductions because of class sizes and enrollment, but we needed these services to be in place to support students. So that's why, you see, some of those reductions were happening, you know, because of that enrollment change, because we were transitioning Abe at the same time, but we really felt like those adds were important to the systems we have in place across the district.
And I think to be fair to Todd, and I think his foresight and some of his thought process, we knew our report cards weren't where we wanted them to be, and the board and the community said, we really need to lean into that and get them to where we would like them to be. And the reality is, our achievement in Monroe has been pretty good for a long time. Much of the report card scoring is based upon, how are you doing with those targeted groups? ELL being one of those targeted groups, and people who are behind on reading and math being other targeted groups, and putting systems of support in to help those students catch up is the way you move that report card. And so you can't say, you know, report card's bad, do something about it, and then say, we're not willing to invest in that. And so I think that's where the money got invested, and I think we've seen some great results based upon that.
Absolutely. By the way, how great is it that your business administrator is speaking to some of those points? Like, appreciate Ron's perspective, because that's not always the case with business administrators. So that's exactly right. There's a standard of excellence in Monroe. People expect great schools. We feel like we've had great schools, but we recognize that, given school report cards and the way they're built, and given the metrics, we had to pay attention to the things that matter most, and that staff reallocation plan, we felt nailed it. And again, I think that's, we're seeing the results of a lot of hard work. I think it also speaks to this district, despite the fact that we have difficult budget times, that doesn't mean that we stop thinking critically about how we're going to conduct our business. We need to be intentional, we need to make tough decisions. Just because we're making reductions doesn't mean that we don't make additions when necessary, and it's pretty clear that those additions have paid off. So, great question. Any other questions? Go to the next one. So this gives you, you know, a numerical representation of the cuts that were just listed. Basically, what you'll see is, you know, again, the numbers reduced, it's broken down by professional staff positions and non-professional staff positions, both that were reduced and added. And at the bottom, you see the net totals. Essentially, what it gives us is 13 professional positions have been reduced over the course of the last three years. Not quite eight non-professional positions have been reduced. And when you aggregate all of that, you have an annual savings of just over $1.4 million. So again, I share that to remind everyone that we are doing everything in our power to be efficient and to run the organization in a way that's respectful of the taxpayers' dollar. But as we started out with, the conversation about Wisconsin Public School Funding, there's some real challenges that are embedded in the formula, and as a result, we still have more work to do.
And there's a real reality amongst districts of addressing that gap that Joe shared earlier. All of those numbers really increased, and the fact that we were able to run at a million and a half question for the last eight years, you had to be making adjustments annually in order to be able to do that. And so that's, we only shared three years, but it's been going on for quite a while.
Even with the operating referendum in place, just to be clear. Correct. So let's get into the conversation for the upcoming school year. I think it makes sense to start out with a conversation about some reduction options and the related impact on fund balance. And Ron has shared this with the board before, but I'd ask him to discuss it again for everyone's benefit.
Yeah, so the part left column basically looks at, you know, where the budget and the budget projections are. So obviously, this year, once the referendum didn't pass, it gave us a much larger budget deficit than we typically carry, so we're going to use a little more of our fund balance, you know, than we typically would. But then it just shows in those left columns, if we would do nothing, how quickly that fund balance can go away. So fund balance takes a long time to build up. It's great, it helps us avoid some short-term cash flow borrowing, but it can go away really quickly. Typically, every year, we bring our budget in under, you know, when our budget was probably a little more, built a little more honestly in the sense that, you know, you truly kind of projected everything out and said, this is what we really need, and we hope that we can bring it in under, and we always have. We probably came in a little more under. Typically, in most years, you could bring the budget in 2% to 3% under, which meant you were saving somewhere between about $500,000 and $900,000 per year. As we've had to squeeze out some of those areas and basically tighten them down to a level to make the budget work, I think the reality is, we're probably only going to be able to expect about $500,000 that we'll be able to bring the budget in under on an annual basis. And that's something we'll work to do. Like I say, we have, you know, my 19 years here, we've always brought the budget in under, and that will be the intent to continue to do that. But I don't know that we can rely on it coming in a million dollars under, because I'm just not sure that'll happen. So the second column there in each of those four areas says, what's that look like if we, the budget actually comes in $500,000 better because we kept our expenditures less than budgeted? And so what that means is, it takes a little longer for that fund balance to erode away, but again, it erodes away really quickly. And even at the $500,000 level, you know, of reductions, or I should say, at the $800,000 level of reductions, you can see where we're burning through that fund balance pretty quickly. At a million dollars next year, we would still be able to maintain $4 million of fund balance. Again, going forward from that, if we don't pass a referendum, or if we don't make significant reductions after that point, you know, we would have to do that because the fund balance would be eroded very quickly. At a million and a half, you know, it's another $500,000 a year protecting that fund balance. However, I understand that the board is trying to balance, you know, when you're talking at additional $500,000, we already reduced $900,000 last year. If you're reducing a million dollars this year, there's no easy cuts, and you're really starting to look at, you know, teachers and programs at that point. And so I know there's some want by the board to say, all right, perhaps we should, you know, take a little more risk and give the community one more chance at an operating referendum question before we make all of those cuts. And so that's what we're showing there between the million and the million and a half. So that million is certainly doable, it's eating into our fund balance. However, you know, it's not putting us into jeopardy per se, but we also know that a year from now, if we don't have a solution, then we would have to be implementing even further reductions at that point in time.
Any questions for Ron on that?
Two questions around. First, can you tell us, every single one of these scenarios shows us going into the negative. What happens to a school district when you run out of funds in the fund balance?
Well, by law, you're not supposed to be negative. I say that 20 years ago, 18 years ago, when I came, we actually had a negative fund balance in Monroe. And you get a call from the DPI, and they say, this isn't supposed to be happening, what's your solution? And so it's not a case where you should ever have a negative fund balance. And so getting to that point, you have to have some foresight and make some tough decisions before you get there. The reality is, as the board knows, but not everybody in the community knows, revenues come in, you know, basically, for the majority of the year, we get significant revenues in December with state aid, we get significant revenues in January and February as people make their first tax payments, and then we get significant aid at the end of our fiscal year in June. And then some of our, the remainder of our taxes don't even come till August, so after our year is done. So our expenditures are happening July through June, our revenues are sometimes coming in even after that. And so that's why you need to have some fund balance, just for that cash flow purposes. And so that's why I was talking, like, even looking after next year, whether we go down to 4 million, 4 and a half, whatever, at that point, you're starting to get to the point where you have to make some really tough decisions, because if you start going much below that, then the amount of dollars and the amount of time that you're having to short-term cash flow borrow, you're basically living off of a credit card. You're saying, yep, I'm borrowing money to pay the bills until I get my paycheck, right? And that's not a good way to live. And so, yes, you don't want to get to where you're upside down and your revenues, your bills are more than your income, right? And you're in the hole and getting deeper. But you also don't want to get into the point where you're living off that credit card until payday comes, and that's what happens if you start getting too low.
Thank you for leading perfectly into my second question. What's that amount where you have to start short-term cash borrowing?
We talked about that a little bit at the finance meeting tonight. If you start getting below 6 million, historically, we start to have to look at that. Now, now that activity accounts are within our operating checkbook, that gives us a little balance to lean on for a short time, meaning, you know, those accounts are pretty steady. They don't like fluctuate like the school does. And so if we, you know, have to like cover a month or whatever, there's some additional dollars that can do that. So really, it's, you know, probably that five to six million dollar point is where you start to have to look at short-term cash flow borrowing. Now, as we talked about in finance, that doesn't mean you have to short-term cash flow borrow that for the whole year. A lot of times, you can look at it and say, the end of November into the start of December is one of our really low times, and so you might be short-term cash flow borrowing for, you know, the month of November and the first week of December. And then that state aid comes in, and you're caught up. And so it's not like you're leaning on that all year long, but you are having to borrow money, potentially a couple million dollars, to bridge that five to six-week gap. And there's a cost associated with that.
These options, no matter what we do, next school year, we're short-term borrowing at some point.
Most likely, yes. Yep.
And just kind of follow-up question. Our rate, what we pay to borrow cash, kind of depends on our fund balance, so as we degrade the balance further, our rate goes up? Is that accurate or not?
It's somewhat accurate. There's basically two sides of that. So there is, in the short-term world, short-term cash flow, not quite as much. And so you do sometimes have to look at, what is your tax-exempt borrowing rate versus what, if any, interest rate you're getting for any extra dollars you have on hand? And sometimes it doesn't, it helps balance itself out. Long-term, though, it certainly hurts you and does cost you. So, you know, not necessarily in the next year or two, but when the window opens, and if interest rates come down, and you have the opportunity to refinance the debt on the high school, and save probably, you know, hopefully millions of dollars over the course of a number of years, when you do that, because typically, that's what you're able to, in trying to do when you refinance those, that's when they're going to, you're going to get rated. You know, you're AAA, AA, A-rated. That's when you're going to get rated based upon your financials, and that's when it really has significant long-term cost impacts.
Thank you.
So just to repeat what Mike said, it doesn't matter which one of these options for reductions we take, we're going to have to short-term cash flow borrow in every one of these scenarios until we hopefully pass a referendum in 2026.
Yeah, and I would basically say again that, you know, you're really laddering out to next April, right? Because the reality at that point is, you know, if the community would choose not to support a referendum at that point in time, then you're really having to, you probably have that list of potential reductions in front of people so that they know what the true impacts of the question is, and you have it kind of queued up to move forward in the event it wouldn't pass.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
Any other questions for Ron? All right. So let's take a look at the next slide, and this is where we get into the, some of the nitty-gritty. Again, I want to remind everyone, the purpose of the board's discussion tonight is to come up with an amount. It's the administrative team's responsibility to come up with a plan, but also, in fairness to the board, we felt that it was important to provide context, because talking about numbers arbitrarily without any background information is really difficult. So what I want to do now is, I want to go through everything that's listed here. I'd ask the board to hold on to your questions till I get to the end of this slide, and then what we can do is, we can go point by point as people have questions, so they have an idea of what we're talking about. So we have this broken down into three tiers. It starts with tier one reductions, and the first bullet there is for the reduction of two full-time professional staff and three full-time support staff. Now, it's important to acknowledge that all of these reductions have already been realized. So what do we mean by that? When we're talking about attritional cuts, as we were speaking to earlier, these have already been, these have already happened, and these would all be built into the reduction going forward as a part of tier one. So breakdown on those positions are Abraham Lincoln Special Education Instructional Aid, middle school and high school German teacher, that position. We have a resignation, and that teacher will be leaving us next month. High school Special Education Teacher, high school Special Education Instructional Aid, and a high school custodian. Then we have deliveries. That basically is speaking to a position that can be recoded in portion to Fund 50. And Ron can speak to that in a little bit when we get into the discussion. It would mean an adjustment to the health insurance plan for our district. It would also mean the elimination of summer school transportation. That is not something that's required by law and is currently subsidized by the district. It would also mean the elimination of one regular school-year bus route. It would also mean a 10% reduction in pay for athletics and stipends. There would be a reduction to Todd's curriculum budget, and we would reallocate some state grant dollars that we have access to according to the grant requirements. So that's tier one at a total of 800. So that's tier one at a total of eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred dollars. Again, the positions at that tier have all been realized. There wouldn't be any layoffs associated with that. If we go to tier two reductions, essentially what that would be is non-professional staff up to four, um, FTEs. And at this level, any reductions, whether in part or in full, would result in employee layoffs. And that would be up to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And then tier three reductions would get us up to, um, four FTEs of professional staff. Um, and again, any reductions at tier three would result in employee layoff. And that could be up to a total of three hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, you know, when you add those up, tier one is eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred dollars. You add tier one and two, if we were to go all the way through tier two, that would be a total of one million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. And then adding it all up together, it would be one million, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred dollars. So with that, um, I would, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have because we know there's a lot there and, and we can anticipate that the board has some questions. So, Ron, I don't know, Ron or Todd, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that before questions. Bless you.
To be clear, that, that tier one reductions reflect positions, um, that folks have vacated that we are not backfilling, correct?
Correct.
So I think it's also important to note that, um, with the departure of our, our last German teacher and we're not backfilling it, that means that that program will, will end. We'll no longer offer German at the middle of our school level, correct?
That is correct. Uh, that, that was a tough decision, but I think given, um, the recent resignation in addition to the enrollment in the program, the numbers, Todd, I don't know if you want to speak to.
We currently have fifty-seven students at the high school that take German. And we currently, and just to give you an idea, German one, we have seven students enrolled. So numbers are low.
Have you the opportunity to do online German or it's just done?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something we can, we can explore. There's a cost obviously to purchasing courses through, through Jedi. And we do do some Jedi courses, um, for students. We haven't discussed details of that being an offering, but that, that's an option.
How many of the kids are like in level three and four?
Uh, three, we have thirteen, and four, we have nine. And then we have eight students that are, um, in the CAP program through Oshkosh.
And how will that affect them if they're not getting to finish the year?
Finish the year in terms of?
This year?
This year.
Twenty twenty-five.
Jeremy's working with Oshkosh to figure out a plan to make sure we can accommodate those kids so they can complete that and get their credits.
That's a great question, Terry. The intent is not to say once that teacher is done, the program stops this year. It's to, working hard to appropriately staff that, that position, which as you can imagine is a bit challenging. And, but our intent is to finish out the year, given that we have a number of kids that are enrolled in German.
Okay, thank you.
Will the Spanish program be unaffected?
There are no, no plans to.
Except for a lot of those students will probably then take Spanish. So that obviously will increase our numbers, um, of students that take that.
I, I do think it's worth saying that we recognize the rich history of the German program in this, in this district, in this community. And we didn't take this, um, this decision lightly. Um, but given all the factors, um, tough decisions are going to need to be made frequently and this is one of them. And so, um, with great appreciation for all that the German program has done over the years, this will be part of our, our recommendation going forward.
We just keep throwing questions at you then?
Please, I think that's the best, Phil. Why not?
So the one regular school year bus route, will all the world kids still have service? Can just, Ron consolidate?
Yeah, by law, we have to provide transportation. And so, uh, we will continue, we actually reduced one bus route last year. Uh, and so this would be another. And so obviously, it gets a little tougher each time you do that. And, uh, uh, it'll be difficult for, uh, the bus company to work through with us, uh, that additional reduction. Uh, but, uh, and, and likely, I don't know that we will, you know, have a lot more to gain there going forward. Uh, but I think we can, we can work one more bus reduction into it, so. Uh, our, you know, our route times here, certainly when you compared to, you know, when I was in Northland Pines and we were running four hundred and eighty square miles, uh, our route times here are, are pretty reasonable. You know, we're a pretty compact district. Will bus times, uh, ride times get a little longer? Yep. Uh, but, uh, uh, we're still pretty reasonable in our, our route times.
Does the state mandate a maximum time they can be on the bus?
No. No, we had, we had students on, you know, well before school and well after school. Because up, when you were dealing with lakes, sometimes you're the unfortunate first on, last off, which typically isn't how we have to run our routes here, so.
So you're right, the, the admin team's recommendation is all of tier one and then half of tier two, correct? Correct?
So we, getting to the next slide.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
No, I mean, so we'll, we'll come back to this, but since Terry asked, if you, go ahead. So, uh, I, I want to share this recommendation and be clear. This is not meant to, um, truncate the, the conversation by the board. The, the board has to have a spirited and meaningful conversation about what's the right amount. But in fairness to the board, it was asked that we provide a, a recommendation in terms of the amount. And our recommendation is for a million dollars. And so that would be everything that's listed in tier one. And then it would, um, partially go into tier two, meaning that it would be a reduction of two non-professional positions. We would not recommend going into tier three, which would include professional staff. Um, and as it states on the slide, um, we've, we've given this a lot of thought. This is hard work, um, and we're not asking anyone to feel sorry for us, but we take this seriously. And we believe that this number achieves that balance of addressing the educational needs of the students we serve and ensuring the future and the financial viability of our district. Um, so, yes, that's, that's the answer, Terry.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No, it's all right.
Jumped ahead, sorry.
Yes.
Follow-up question, Ron, can you speak to the changes that, um, the impact of the health insurance and what that may look like?
Yeah, so certainly, I mean, it's, it's, we'll be getting our renewal information, um, in probably early April. And so we'll have some discussions from there, knowing where we're starting. At a minimum, uh, I would say, um, you know, two years ago when we had looked at our, um, insurance renewal, uh, we had a factor in there for what the cost of moving the district to a high deductible plan uh, was going to be district-wide, uh, with an HSA backfill of a portion of the amount by the, the district. And so we, we know what that number is. We're going to see if that number holds when we get to our April renewal. Um, and so it's, it's kind of factoring for right now in what that savings would be. That's not saying that becomes the only option for every employee. But it's probably saying that that becomes the option that the district will contribute toward. And then if people want, uh, a different or better, uh, insurance option, then they're paying for that up-charge out of their own paycheck, so.
Thank you for clearing that, because I, clarifying that, because I think it's important for anyone, uh, to understand that this is, this is reaching farther, way farther than just this, what looks like maybe a shorter list, right?
Yeah, so this, so when you, when you start talking about whether the, the, the health insurance or, or the, uh, and you know, I'll talk about, a little bit about the athletic stipends too, but it's like, certainly when you're talking about the health insurance, it's, it's a, a little bit of costs, you know, spread across, you know, all, right? And I'm not saying a little, but it's, it's, it's cost spread across all versus, uh, specific positions or programs that are going away. Uh, and so that's, you know, that's what we're trying to accomplish there. Without that, then yeah, suddenly then you have to put four more positions on the table. Uh, and, and so, um, that's what we're trying to avoid. Same thing when you, you look at the athletic stipends is we've been working on a process of kind of right sizing, uh, what those stipends are so that they're equitable. Uh, you know, and some of the discussion there is, you know, are we better off making, uh, a reduction in some of those stipends across the board versus saying, these coaches or these programs go away? And, and I think it, it would probably, you know, is, is difficult as, you know, no one wants to take a 10% pay cut, right? But I mean, you know, I, I think for most of those people who are doing it, they're doing it because they, they love the programs and they love the kids that they're working with. I think most of them would say, I'd rather do that than see something, some opportunity go away from, from students.
Will we be keeping track of like, um, you know, with summer school? That's going to be an issue for the kids that live outside of Monroe, the city of Monroe. So will we be keeping track of how many students we lose if we make this reduction? And where they came from, because I think that's going to be a huge impact on the summer school program.
I think we serve around a thousand students during summer school. I think when I looked up, about thirty percent take, take busing. So we have around three hundred kids that access busing. This doesn't impact our transfer in between, but it will impact kids getting to summer school and getting home. And yeah, Terry, I think we're going to have to monitor what does that do to our overall numbers moving forward.
Thanks, Todd.
So Joey, you'll still have the bus transfer then, just picking them up in the country at home?
Yep.
Yep. When they're back and forth or to fishing or whatever it might be, those, those services will still be provided.
Lessons and all that stuff.
Todd, can you speak a little bit to your curriculum budget reduction and the impact that that may have on programming?
Yeah, I mean, part of that was looking at what, what updates have we made recently over the last few years? And some of our bigger changes, which is elementary, when you talk three buildings, three elementary schools, um, we've made updates to both ELA and math, so those have already been done. So then we got typically, you know, a five to seven-year window. So because we've made those changes in the last couple of years, um, some of, any future changes certainly wouldn't be as significant, which allows us to make some reductions there. And, you know, we'd have, we're going to have to look at, how does that impact some of the curriculum hours we provide over the summer? And some of those other pieces that certainly would come out of that budget. But, um, that's something we have to do and, and something that we felt like could go on that list.
Would, um, any of the parts of the curriculum cycle be taking a pause like we did during COVID? Or are the plans that it all comes out of, you know, like curriculum hours and things like that? Or will certain departments be taking a pause?
No, I don't think I see any pauses, Terry, that we probably would need to have. I think it comes out of like some of those other areas, like I said, curriculum hours. And, you know, just kind of forecasting any of those curricular updates you would make, it wouldn't be as, again, financially big as some of the changes we've made with ELA and math at the elementary.
I think, I think that's what I would, would caution is that in, in three, four, five years, when ELA and math come back around, you know, we're probably having to look at, you know, putting some dollars back into curriculum. Because when, when those, when those subjects come around, the costs are, are greater, right? It's just a reality.
Thank you, Todd.
On the deliveries and the grant dollars, I think Joe said you were going to speak to those.
Yeah, the deliveries, I mean, are, are, we're fortunate in the fact that our food service, our Fund 50 runs in the black. Many districts are, are taking money out of their Fund 10 and, and funding their food service, uh, program. Uh, we have one of our position, which is deliveries, which not only does like the mail deliveries amongst of our, our, our buildings, but the majority of the day is actually, uh, transferring, you know, food for breakfast, food for lunch, and then taking trays back for washing and things of that nature. And so, uh, you know, we had talked to DPI and we can justify taking a portion of that position, uh, and, and coding it to Fund 50 because, um, a portion of their day is really strictly dedicated to, to Fund 50 for food service-related work. And so, uh, that's what we're doing in that situation. So it's, again, covering some of those costs through the food service program, which is, in, in our case, we're, we're, we're fortunate. It's been, uh, in the black and, and self-reliant. You know, it's one of those areas where you always got to keep your, your eye on because the reality is in most districts, it's not. Uh, and most districts are, are subsidizing it. And so, uh, but we're in a position right now where we can afford to do that, so.
So the, the Fund 50 and the food service, that's funded independently from what our operational budget is?
Yep, absolutely. Yep. So self, well, ideally, it's a self-sufficient program. Uh, many districts end up having to, to subsidize it if it isn't self-sufficient.
I have a question for you. I don't know, probably Joe wants to talk about this too. So if we just did the tier one, eight seventy-five, no one loses a job, we're going to run in the, we're going to be short-term borrowing no matter what, right? So can you talk about why admin's recommending cutting two positions? If, I mean, what's that one twenty-five a year really? Is it worth it? How's that, what's that look like? Or talk about that decision?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's difficult. Uh, I think the, the reality is we were trying to find that balancing point. There's no right or wrong answer. Uh, you know, I think you could say, yep, we got to go to the full million and a half because if we don't, it's just that many more tougher decisions to take, uh, next year if, if a referendum doesn't pass. I think, uh, you can certainly say, let's not impact, uh, other people who, you know, uh, lay them off if we're, you know, in the short term. You know, we typically have some turnover, uh, in the spring. I can't guarantee you that there will be, but typically there is some. And so I think the hope is that we would get enough, uh, turnover of those positions that it might mean that there is another place for some of those people to transfer to or to fall to. Uh, but we just thought that that was kind of a, a midpoint or a balancing point of, of trying to weigh how much fund balance to use versus, uh, you know, how significantly we want to impact staffing and programs.
So it's kind of like knowing that will, there'll be a reduction, we won't backfill a position, kind of hoping?
Yeah, I mean, it, there's a, we're, we're certainly, if, if we go this route, you're going to have the conversations with the people so that they're aware that there's a possibility that at the end of the year, their position is going away. Now, if something else opens up, that'll give them the option to move into it. But if, if something else doesn't open up, then yes, that, that becomes a reduction.
I guess I have a question on the other direction. So, Ron, you named this as like a, a bridge to a referendum spring of twenty-six. So if, if we were in the hypothetical scenario where we, we're not going to go to referendum in twenty-six, what, what would be the benefit of going further, going to the one point five over one?
Well, I think sooner or later, you're going to have to make either the reductions or, or have the referendum dollars. So it's, it's, you're, you're, it's a question of when you make that reduction and how much fund balance you have retained in order to do that. Uh, so the sooner you make, the more reductions, you hold on to a little more fund balance. But those programs go away that much sooner, right? And, and then when you make that subsequent next reduction, it's not quite as deep. So I mean, that, that would be the justification for, for why you do it. You know, I do know, uh, from some of our listening sessions, there were people who said, you know, when you run the next referendum, because everybody knows that there's going to be a need for another referendum, you know, we want to see the list so that we know what, what exactly we're voting for. And so by not going to that amount, it gives you that chance to say, all right, here's what that full list looks like. Where other people could say, well, jeez, if I knew that, you know, I might have voted differently or, or, you know, whatever. And so it just gives some opportunity for the community to, to, to make that full, open-eyed assessment.
Because if we, and I know maybe hypothetical path isn't, isn't super beneficial right now, but if we weren't going to go to referendum until, if we're going to go next spring, we would have to make, how, how much in cuts would you be recommending next spring?
Uh, just looking over there on the far-left column, I mean, you're talking about, uh, a three-million-dollar deficit. Uh, if I'm running out of fund balance, you know, you would have to get there, right? And so you, you would certainly need, if you did a million and a half, you'd need another million and a half, right? If you did a million, you'd need another two. Now, all this is predicated under, we're in a biennial budget. We have no idea at this point in time what the funding from the state's going to be. These numbers could get better, they could get worse. These numbers could get better, they could get worse. We, we don't know.
Right, are we in year two of the biennial?
Yes, so this spring they'll be working on a, on a budget. Ideally, uh, they may have it approved in June. So at least we have some semblance where we're going. I've seen it get approved as late as October. Uh, and so, uh, typically October first kind of becomes a drop dead date for them because they know they need to certify school aid by October fifteenth. Even though schools have been operating since July one in that fiscal year.
Yeah, but historically, what you put in front of us in my experience so far is, is a pretty good representation, right? I mean, it's not like we're going to be swinging
We shouldn't.
enough one way or the other to make an impact on our decision here.
If anything, I would hope it would move better. It's looking, so the projection is using the three hundred and twelve dollars. That's, that's kind of being held in there. Uh, you know, there's certainly some hope by people that they'll either raise, uh, because we're at the low limit, uh, on the revenue limit, uh, meaning we're at the bottom, the lowest amount that a, a district can use for the revenue limit. Uh, so there's some hope that they'll raise that threshold, uh, so that those of us who are at the bottom can get a little bump. There's some hope that, uh, you know, some additional funding will go into special education because I think they're starting to get in here that it's, it's a problem. Now, with that said, it, it takes a, you know, it's going to take a significant bump, right? So last year, uh, they, they greatly celebrated the fact that they were raising, uh, special education aid to thirty-three percent. However, that was based upon how much special education spending was the year before. Special education's cost went up about six percent. And so when they, their thirty-three percent really only became twenty-seven, right? Because at the end of the day, they didn't put enough money in it to fund the new costs that were happening. And so, um, you know, it would take a jump to like a forty percent or something to really start to have some beneficial impact. Forty percent reimbursement for, I know you guys know that, but not everybody hears that.
Because right now, we're mandated to provide special ed, but the state only funds a third of that, right?
A, a less than a third of that, yeah.
And the referendum did not pass this spring. We lost, or this, this past fall, we lost a million and a half dollars out of our budget.
Correct. And, and the reality is that also has some ongoing implications. Uh, not so much from the revenue limit side of it, but you know, um, you know, we do get state aid based upon how much we spend, right? And so, um, you know, we're, we're aided at about the sixty to seventy percent level. However, with that said, once you get to a certain point, each additional dollar you spend, you get less and less money for. Uh, with where we are right now, you know, there's about twenty-two to twenty-three percent of that, uh, that could, becomes a reduction in state aid. Uh, so above that one and a half million dollars, we're not spending it now. But that means we're getting about twenty-two to twenty-three percent less of that in state aid the following year, which then impacts your, your tax levy the following year, right? And so, you know, there is, there, there are implications also of, of aid reduction when you have cost reduction.
That, that's, I mean, that's why our fund balance degrades so fast, right? If, if we don't make at least a million and a half dollars worth of cuts this year, we're, we're going either further behind than we, than we were last year, right? And we had to make a million dollars of cuts last year. As, as painful it is, as it is, right? I don't, I don't like saying out loud that, that we might have to look at, at making these tier three cuts. But to me, if we don't make them now and we don't get the community support for a, a spring recommend or referendum, then, you know, at least we're, we're taking some of the pain now and some of the pain then versus stacking it all on top of each other. And then it's really disruptive to our two students and staff versus what the disruption's going to be now.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, I think you're going to have significant reductions, uh, at the next step regardless. So I think it's just, uh, I, I'm not, I think it's fair logic and I agree with it. Uh, but I think also, uh, the question becomes, you know, whether it's a, a million and a half or two, if you don't pass it next spring, at least did you give the community an opportunity with their eyes open to say, okay, yeah, we, we knew what these, these consequences are? Because what we heard someone at the listening sessions were like, you know, well, we really didn't know what it was, so we just said no, right? I, I think there was a lot more reasons why people said, no, I'm not being, minimizing that. But I think, um, I think if we run the question next time, I think we have to have the full, full list in advance. So as scary as that might be for our staff and, uh, for some members of our community and even our kids, and we, but the board has chosen not to do that in the past, I think that's what we would have, will have to do. So that they know what the real consequences are.
That's what they said in the listening sessions.
Joe, can you talk to us about the engagement with the administrative team? And specifically, I just, my, my question comes from the fact that the, currently in tier one, which is your, you know, part of your recommendation, that's, these are the attrition-based savings. You could have also come to us and said, like, we have attrition in these areas, but we're going to decide to refill these and cut in other places to, to show up in tier one. So I just want to, I guess do a check to help. Is, is, is this what your administrative team is on board with? Having the attrition in these places kind of take hold on, on into the future?
Yeah, absolutely. It's a good question. We've spent a lot of time going through this process, uh, looking at a variety of options. Whenever we're able to use attritional cuts, that's what we prefer to do. Uh, sometimes that's not possible because there's times when people move out of a position and we absolutely need that position. It's critical. But ultimately, um, you know, we're, we're a business that's very much about relationships and trying to be supportive of people. We have an obligation to the kids, to the community, um, to our taxpayers to do it the right way. But ultimately, as we took a look at how we were, um, formulating this plan, we felt that this list of attritional cuts, um, was a list that we could support that made sense. And we feel it's, it's the right, right way to, to move forward. The team has been a part of this conversation for months now. First thing we're doing tomorrow morning is meeting to discuss the decision that the board is about to make tonight related to the amount. And in a little bit, I'll talk to everyone about the, the timeline and the process going forward. But, um, to be clear, none of these reductions are easy. Outside of, yes, recoding, uh, the deliveries to Fund 50, that's pretty easy, right? Uh, but when you're talking about a German program, when you're talking about aids, uh, that we've had previously, teachers that we've had previously, um, even the custodian, there, there is an impact on our district and our operations. Um, and the board has been very clear about, to the greatest extent possible, um, keeping the reductions away from the kids in the classroom. And we share that priority and we've done our best to do that. But we are getting to a point where that is very difficult. Um, and so we're going to do our best with whatever it is the board determines is necessary.
So I guess I'll, I'll, I'll ask more to the point. So to the admin, to the admin team, if we were to, uh, pass the recommendation of one million dollars, question that I would ask the administrators here tonight, building leaders, in the context of our budgeting reality, and nobody wants to have to make reductions like this, but in the context of that necessity, are these identified reductions what's best for kids?
And I would say yes. Again, tough decisions, but knowing what we know about the daily operations, what we're required to do, I do believe that this is a, a plan that is in the best interest of the kids that we serve. And certainly if, you know, you would like some feedback from the principals,
Sure.
welcome to hear from them as well.
So at, at that one million dollar level, looking at all the options that the board has, taking it at that one million dollar level, that's what's in the best interest of kids in the whole of the conversation when you weigh everything.
I, I mean, I think our admin team has had extensive conversations about this and looked at it from very different angles and had the problem solved and, um, put a lot of, it wasn't just a one-day decision. It wasn't just one conversation and it's been, it's been ongoing for a couple of years, honestly. And trying to do everything we can for it not to impact our students. And at the end of the day, it's going to, but what's least impact? We're doing the best we can, you know? It's not a perfect, it's not a perfect plan by any means, but I think it's thoughtful. And I do think it's the best, best, best plan that we could have put together. I don't want to speak for everybody.
Yeah, no, a lot of numbers, a lot of spreadsheets, enrollment across grades, enrollment across buildings, enrollment across programs. What's the number impacted if we did this? What's the number impacted if we did this? Can this building operate without this, right? How much more can we ask this person to do so that we can make this happen? None of these things are easy, right? Like, there's a reason that we had all of these positions and credit to Ron, credit to all of the past people that have, you know, sat in the administrative seat. But we've made sure that the people that are employed in our district are needed, necessary, working hard. And as you saw in that past spreadsheet, like, we've already made hard reductions and we've recognized that people have left us and as much as maybe we wanted to fill one spot or another, we allocated.
Oh, sorry, just to add to Jenna, the other thing, and Jim mentioned this to me earlier today. Another thing that we do is we look at our comparative analytics, basically looking at how we staff our schools versus how other schools our size staff their schools to see if we have any outliers. And when we do that, um, we feel that we're doing the right work. And that's something that, you know, it's our hope as we bring this plan forward. When we get to the appropriate time, that we'll provide some of those comparables so we can, can give people a sense that, um, we're not overstaffed in a particular area or understaffed in a particular area. We're, we're trying to make sense of, um, everything that's required of us and doing it in a way that makes a lot of sense. So, sorry, Sarah, I didn't mean to jump in on you there.
Everything to what Dave said, um, this conversation's been hard and, um, especially when you care about people in the district. But we've done the best we can with the numbers that we have done to, to get to where we're at. And I think, um, our administrative team has really worked hard together to consider all the impacts for each of the buildings in the process.
All impacts kids, right?
Yeah.
This is the best, best we can provide in terms of a plan. Cause every reduction, you know, those kids go somewhere else, right? So that lands on another staff member's responsibility to pick up, you know, what, what we no longer have. And as a district, I think even within the reductions, we want to continue to provide great services for kids and be a great district. And how do we continue to do that, continue to deal with this issue moving forward?
I think people need to know too, that when you lose someone, even a custodial staff, somebody else has to do that work. It doesn't disappear.
That's right.
You know, and teachers sometimes have to pick up on that work and take their own garbage and tie it up and take it out when they could be spending more time on students and working with the students and their families. But all those types of positions do take away from students in some respect.
I just wanted to call out the building leaders. This is hard work. You've obviously been part of the process. Thank you for helping the administration with this.
So I think part of, part of the recommendation then is a hope that we can then listen more, take this next year, educate our community, try to build those relationships again in hopes that we can pass a referendum successfully in April without having to cut deeper. And if not, then this gets really deep really quick.
Absolutely. I think in the end, we, we have a responsibility to listen to our stakeholders. And we, we've celebrated the, the listening sessions a couple of times here, but those were extremely valuable. Um, and it's my hope that we'll do more of that going forward because, um, not only did it allow us to learn about some of the thoughts and ideas and feedback that people have, and it's not always comfortable, but it's necessary. But I think it also leads to a greater understanding on both sides. Um, and I think there's, there's a lot of good people that believe in their position. And ultimately, um, it's through those opportunities, we can hopefully close that gap a little bit and realize that, um, we are still one community and we're trying to do the best we can for our kids and to move forward as a, as a community. Yep. So I'm just going to the final slide here. Our hope is that the board will approve a operations budget reduction amount. Um, that will give the administrative team some direction, um, regarding our need to finalize the specific reduction plan. Again, we have a number of contingencies built. But our hope is that we can do some planning tomorrow morning. And then, um, over the next few days, we can communicate with the staff that would be directly impacted by the proposed reductions, as Ron said earlier. It's necessary for us to communicate this, but that doesn't mean that, um, there aren't things that could potentially change over the course of time. Um, there may be others that resign and we may have some people that were initially identified as possibly being reduced. And if they're qualified to move into another job, that's something that we would explore and hopefully, uh, make happen. Um, and then after communicating with all the parties that are directly impacted by the proposed reductions, um, my hope would be by the end of this week, that I would communicate to the entire staff, um, the reduction plan. As everyone at this table knows, and I'm sure everyone in the community can understand, it's pretty anxious times for the staff. People are nervous. And I didn't realize this until I had a group of sophomore boys at Pizza Hut talking to me. And I wanted to talk about basketball and they wanted to talk about the budget reductions. This, this hits kids too. And so, um, to the extent possible, we need to expedite this process in a way that allows us to make smarter decisions. But there's a lot of good people that are, are having a tough time with this process. And so, you know, it'd be my hope that we can work through that this week and get people some answers going forward. And then on February tenth, um, our next board meeting, uh, we would come back and we would share, uh, some information regarding how the admin team plans to meet the number that was identified and put that plan into place.
So then at the meeting on the tenth, the, the tier two reductions that are masked right now would then become something that we share and open?
Correct. Yep.
Any additional questions or conversation from board members?
Yeah, just a comment. I honestly don't like being the one at this end of the, the discussion. I, I personally feel looking at the, the rate, we're going to be looking at degrading our, our fund balance. And the sentiment that came back on that survey unfortunately was not good. Yes, we have a year to kind of develop that community trust and, and show this story. But if we don't make a larger cut and, and go to that million and a half, we're likely going to be asking for even more than we've asked for, for the spring to start to fill that, that gap that's just getting larger and larger every year. So unfortunately, I feel personally, we need to go to that, that deepest level. And it sucks, I don't even like saying it out loud because it, it is going to have an impact.
Yeah, I can appreciate that point of view. I think I'm coming at it from a different direction, just looking at the totality of budget deficit reductions that have been realized through attrition, the unavoidable reality that we're going to cash flow bar regardless. I am, I am comfortable supporting the administrative team's recommendation. And I would like to see the community weigh in on, as Ron said, with their eyes open about what those impacts would be if we had to go deeper. And at this point in time, based on Ron's projections, we have the cash flow balance to sustain an effort through to, um, spring of twenty-six. So, um, I think going with their recommendation strikes a balance, preserves the most positions serving their students at a time where, you know, the incredible work of our students and staff are starting to turn a corner on achievement. and staff are starting to turn a corner on achievement. And it does create a shared burden for all of our staff through some of the reductions in tier-one. So that's where I'm at right now.
And also, we have to keep in mind, we always do have retirements. I mean, when we talk about attrition, there's an average number of retirements every year. So, I mean, some of those positions might need to be refilled because they're vital, but we always do have retirements.
Well, that's a good point, Terry. And just because we would come up with a reduction plan doesn't mean we wouldn't continue to do the work that we've been doing over the last several years that was represented by the list up there. So as those opportunities present themselves, we will continue to have those conversations and make the necessary decisions.
I guess I'm optimistic that we can heal as a community over this next year, and I'm comfortable with what's recommended by the administration at this point. I'm not comfortable going deeper than that right now. And I know that that may mean that we have to cut even deeper next year. I appreciate the weight of that also, but I'm just, I'm not comfortable going deeper than that until I give our community another chance.
Any other thoughts, comments?
I'll name, I'm a little torn on this. I think initially I was coming in thinking, where I'm hearing Mike represent. I think, yeah, maybe for me, what changed my mind is the, I actually don't feel compelled that some pain now and some pain later, well, and let's be clear, all of this is painful, right? So I know everyone's already said that, but everything on the list, outside of the thing that Joe called out, I was like, oh, gosh, that is so far from ideal. But I'm not compelled that kind of spreading this out and going deeper into professional staff right now is going to help keep us on the course that we've been on from a student results standpoint. So I think where I'm landing, as hard as this is from a financial perspective, because we are kicking the can a little bit down the road, but I think, I agree with what Rich and what Nikki shared, that I'll support a million-dollar, support a million-dollar reduction at this time.
I'm on the same page. I just don't feel like we can go deeper, and I'm hoping that this community can heal and that come next spring, we will be able to pass a referendum and end the cuts at that point as far as making, you know, having to short-term borrow.
That's really why I met as well. I echo some of these same sentiments, that I understand and feel the budget realities, and I also feel comfortable with admin's recommendation if we feel that $1 million right now is what we can do, and we know that that's going to continue to allow the best possible services for our kids. I think that's really important. And so, like Jim said, I don't like any of this. All of this is painful, and I don't like any of it. And it feels bad to have to be doing this, but I feel like that's, I trust our recommendation and know that that's what we need to do right now.
Okay. All right. I would entertain a motion if somebody would like to make it. There's a sample motion in the packet, and if you'd like to include the reduction amount, when you make the motion, please.
Some of it.
For what amount, Terry?
$1 million.
I'll second that. Motion by Terry and second by Phil, to approve the operations budget reduction for $1 million as presented. Additional questions or comments before we vote? Just again, you know, this is not a position that we want to be in. We know that this is going to have impact on staff members. It's going to have an impact on the entire staff through shared reductions in insurance. So it's a very personal impact to those that will be impacted, and just want to make sure that they understand that the board isn't here lightly. These, again, many people have mentioned are not reductions that we want to have to make, but we are in a position that we have to make them, and we appreciate how hard, you know, these next few days are going to be for administration and for the individuals impacted, so.
Do you have another comment? I'm sorry to do this, just since most of these, a lot of these are going to affect the high school, it would have been nice, I don't know what's going on, if Jeremy could have been here, or Josh, we could have asked them some questions, like we did the elementary school teachers, and, especially if we're going to be cutting for, you know, making cuts, the board's going to be making cuts, I will not be here before that all the building reps could have representation here while we're discussing.
Sure enough, Eric, to be clear, I own that. I told them they didn't have to be here, and my thinking on that was that tonight's conversation was more about the amount, less about, yeah.
Just for future.
That's on me, not on them.
Okay. Nikki, would you call the roll, please?
Yep. Nikki Austin, yes. Jim Curran?
Yes.
DePerry?
Yes.
Eric Ekdahl?
Yes.
Mike Brosset?
No.
Teresa Keen?
Yes.
Dylan McGuire?
Yes.
Terry Montgomery?
Yes.
Phil Vosberg?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Next item on the agenda is liaison reports. Leanne is off with us. Do you have anything from MBA or?
I do not.
Okay. Board attended annual Wisconsin Education Convention last week. We did have six members attend for professional development, peer mentoring and networking. As we worked through the committee reports this morning, if board members would like to share any insights or observations, feel free, if you want to have a discussion on some of those topics, let me know. We'll work with administration to bring those forward for discussion on a future agenda. Is there anything from administration?
Not at this time.
Okay. Do you not have any pending Board of Education correspondence at this time? Committee reports, Jim, anything?
So I just, I didn't attend the WASB conference, but I did just want to mention a really inspiring moment last week. I took my kids to the girls' basketball game, and at halftime, they did this thing, I've never seen this before, it was like a cash collection system, I don't know, cash grab, I don't know what they call it, but in honor of our last month's staff member of the month from Abe, Ms. Babler. And it was just, it was incredibly inspiring to see the generosity and to see her out there being honored. And she's not my daughter's 4K teacher, but she's the other 4K teacher in the building, and it meant a lot for my daughter to see that, too. And so I just want to say thanks for whoever kind of organized that and put that together, wherever that idea came from, and of course, everybody who supported with such generosity, one of our incredible staff members.
Terry?
You want us to talk about the?
If you like.
Just went to a lot of sessions. It's really inspirational to go to that and to also be with other board members and have conversations and, you know, because we don't get to get together outside of these meetings, so it's nice to be able to have that camaraderie and meet with everybody. And the sessions were really good, and I've shared privately with other people about sessions that I thought were important, that maybe we should bring forth with different things, like one is a board evaluation, that I think if we want to be more transparent with the community, maybe we should evaluate ourselves every year as well. And so that was one of the important things. And we saw a really great motivational speaker, Clint Swindle, who said, instead of saying "good morning" to people and asking them how they are, say, "tell me something good", because it's much more positive when you greet someone and say, "hi, tell me something good that happened today." And it can be as simple as, "I woke up this morning. I was alive when I got up." So it was a great conference, and I appreciate the opportunity to go and learn stuff that helps us be a better board.
Yeah, and when Terry arrived, I think she sprang it on me, "tell me something good." So Finance Committee met prior to the board meeting tonight to review November and December financials. I did attend the WASB convention as well, really some breakout sessions, and I agree with Terry, I think, the ability just to mingle and share stories with board members from other districts is just really valuable. I mean, we've got a lot of shared challenges and shared successes, I guess, so it was definitely worth the time.
Teresa?
Curriculum will meet the first meeting in February to do K-12 math and a mid-year data update, so just if you're on curriculum, get that on your calendar if you want to attend, anybody. So that first meeting in February. I also attended the WASB conference and has, again, great, great sessions on how can we, things we can do better as a board, things we can do better as a district. Great session on community engagement in the Marquette University poll that they conduct every year on their perceptions of community schools. Great session on 4K and integrating community childcare within schools, sessions on standard-based learning and grading, and great session on effective discussions around how to use data effectively and taking value judging out of data, but to use it to really improve teaching strategies and instructional practices, and how some districts are doing some really innovative things with that. So, again, great sessions that we're eager to talk to people more about.
We were able to host two exchange students from Costa Rica over the break, and that was a wonderful experience, much better than I thought it was going to go, adding two more kids to our household. So I'd encourage everybody to participate in that. It was really well-run, a lot of fun events. I'm excited to ship my kids off to another country for a couple of weeks. I'll take two. This weekend, the high school hosted a wrestling tournament on Saturday. That one was really well-done, thanks to all the volunteers. Then on Sunday, a lot of those same R wrestlers and families helped host a youth tournament on Sunday, and that went exceptionally well as well. That's it.
Dylan?
I also attended the convention, and I think the most interesting was the presentation by Dodgeville that has a wraparound childcare program, starts at 6:00 a.m. and goes to 6:00 p.m. I thought that was pretty innovative. And then another thing, I've been, I was talking to some community members, having concerns about our Hispanic population in relation to federal policies, and I don't know if we have any plans or discussions around that, or if we've seen any attendance issues in the last week or two. I've heard anecdotal things from other districts that have been experiencing that. So just wanted to kind of bring that to the board.
I can't speak to attendance issues. Has there been any noticeable decline in attendance recently in some of our Hispanic families? You can say? Yes, okay. So I think that's out there. We've been reviewing all the guidance that's been provided. I reached out to our legal counsel to get some definitive direction as far as what the district can and can't do in certain circumstances. So we're in the process of developing our own planner and local guidance to make sure that we're following the law, but also doing so in a way that's protecting our children and their families and their rights. And so this is an ever-evolving situation. There's a lot of information that's being floated around, and we're working hard to make sure that we're on top of it. So please know that that's something that there's been a lot of correspondence, and we have plans for additional discussion in the very near future. Thanks for bringing it up, Dylan.
Thank you.
I also attended the WASB conference. It was great. I sat through the delegate sessions as well. And then I think my favorite was the final keynote, Sam Glenn. I think it's really fitting for what we're living through right now. He is an artist, and he has a lot of abstract on the bottom, and it grows into a beautiful tree, and his message is about growing through what you're going through. And I think that this is all shaping all of us collectively as a district right now and all that we've gone through, and a lot of great things are going to come, too, and we're going to learn together, and I just thought it was a really fitting message.
Nikki? I also attended, went to several sessions. The one that I'll talk about briefly is the Marquette Law School Survey for School Sentiment. And for folks unaware, what they do is, since 2012, they've been asking the same question statewide. They'll ask, would you support reducing property taxes or increasing spending on public schools? And starting in 2013, those two lines diverged to supporting school funding, and then back in '23, they diverged and are now going in the opposite direction, or, sorry, they reconverged and are going in the opposite direction. So since '23, the trend for supporting increased spending has decreased, and the trend for lowering taxes is increasing. And they surmise that the reason for that is, as property valuations and associated taxes and the way that schools are funded require us to continue to go to operating referendum, those inflationary pressures coupled with that are increasing at a rate faster than wages. So folks who own property, it's creating a sentiment amongst them that now they're property-rich and wage-poor, and that's hard to overcome. So what's the antidote, as they like to provide, with possible things that you can do, right? So my message to our community is, we need to contact our legislators, we need to let them know what's going on in our community, we need to make sure that their voices are heard. There are opportunities to make some meaningful changes in school funding this year. They're in front of all of our legislators. And serving our kids and running our schools are not supposed to be a political battle. This is an atypical place. We serve all kids, all kids. We need all parents and all members of our community to let our legislators know how important this is and why they need to hear us and start funding our public schools, so. All right.
Nice meeting would have been a good meeting for our local legislators to attend.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we should invite them. Yeah. It's a good thought. All right. Agenda items for future discussion from board members? Okay. Five minutes for the press. I don't see anybody from the press here. So with that, we've got 9:07, entertain a final motion to adjourn. Second by Nikki, second by Terry. By voice vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.